We will call the meeting of the recess meeting of the Board of Aldermen and City of Starkville to order. This is Tuesday, October the fifteenth. If you would, we would stand for the pledge of allegiance. We'll follow that by an invocation by Chaplain Thomas Rogers of the Josie Creek Missionary Baptist Church in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chaplain Rogers.
Father, Heavenly, we thank you again for your many blessings and acts of kindness upon us as your people here in the Starkville community. We thank you, Lord, for the leadership you have given in our mayor and in the alderman and alderwoman. We thank you, Lord, for these are people that you are adding and you will add to our city, that our function will be as that which is pleasing to you. We ask you, Lord, to guide our hearts and guide our minds, Lord, that all we do and say will, Lord, bring you joy and pleasure. And we know when you're pleased, we're blessed as your people. We thank you for all things. We do act these things in the name of our Christ, Christ with God. Amen.
Thank you, everyone. We appreciate you being here this evening. And we will go first to the approval of the official agenda, including consented items. Do we have any amendments to the agenda, either consented or as it's labeled on the official agenda? Any changes? Any changes? All right. Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the official agenda with the consented items as outlined? I have a motion from Alderman Little. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Second from Alderman Walker. Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I will read the consented items. Consideration of the minutes of the September twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen work session of the mayor and board of aldermen of the city of Starkville. Under Mayor's Business, B, consideration of a resolution to enter into an agreement with the Municipal Intercept Company, LLC, to collect the city of Starkville debt as authorized by the Local Government Debt Collection Setoff Act, House Bill Number nine-nine-one, two thousand and nineteen regular session of the Mississippi Legislature. Under Planning, A, consideration of calling for three public hearings for the adoption of the Unified Code to be held November the twelfth, two thousand and nineteen, December the third, two thousand and nineteen, and December the seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen. C is consideration of final plat nineteen dash zero eight, a request for a final plat approval for subdividing three hundred and forty-eight point eight-one parcels into six lots for North Star Industrial Park. This property is located at sixteen twenty-nine Highway three eighty-nine in the M-one zone with a parcel number one-one-five dash two-one dash zero-zero-seven point zero-one, one-one-five dash two-one dash zero-zero-seven point zero-zero, and one-one-five dash two-one dash zero-one zero point zero-two with conditions. Under Engineering, we have authorization for Cody Burnett to participate in the Educational Assistance Program for the fall two thousand and nineteen semester to take master's level courses in civil engineering with a total reimbursement cost not to exceed sixteen hundred dollars. Under Finance Administration, number two is consideration of acceptance of the September financial statements. Number three, consideration of the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen budget amendments. Under the Fire Department, we have number one, request permission to apply for a hazardous materials emergency preparedness grant program to be awarded by the U.S. Department of Transportation Pipeline and Hazardous Materials Safety Administration in the amount of forty-three thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-one cents with a seventy-two, seventy-five twenty-five match, with a seventy-five percent to be reimbursed and the remaining twenty-five percent to be paid for machinery and equipment budget. Number two is request authorization for Clarence Parks to travel to Montgomery, Alabama to attend the Scott Firefighter Combat World Challenge, twenty-eight in two thousand and nineteen, October twentieth to the twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen, at an approximate cost of six hundred dollars. Under Human Resources, number one is request authorization to hire Joe Dan Baker as a lead maintenance worker in the Parks and Recreation Department. Number two is request authorization to advertise for a field maintenance worker in the Starkville Parks and Recreation Department. Number three is request authorization to advertise for a code enforcement officer in the Community Development Department. Number four, request authorization to advertise for a firefighter in the Starkville Fire Department. Under Parks, we have consideration of approval to purchase youth basketball jerseys from Rex Team Sports in the amount of eight thousand, eight thousand five hundred dollars, the lowest of four quotes. In the Police Department, we have number one, consideration to purchase a two thousand and twenty Dodge Charger at twenty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-three dollars off state contract with forfeited funds. Number two is consideration to purchase two solar-powered radar signs from Econo Signs, the lowest bidder, in the amount of five thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and twelve cents, with three thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars to be reimbursed from the fiscal year twenty JAG grant. Under the Sanitation Department, number one is request authorization to purchase a front-end loader from Sandsome Equipment Company, Inc., the lowest bidder, in the amount of two hundred and eighty thousand, with the city clerk to obtain financing quotes. Under the Utilities Department, number one is request authorization to advertise for bids for thirty single-phase seven-point-six-two K-V voltage regulators, material only, one control and relay house, material only, and the construction of the Southwest Starkville one-sixty-one sixty-nine thirteen K-V substation. Number two is request authorization to accept the lowest and best total base bid and additive alternative from J and P Construction in the amount of seven million, seven hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred dollars for the Ernest E. Jones Wastewater Treatment Plant Bio-Solids Improvements. And that closes out the consent agenda items that were on the agenda. Next, we have, the next item up will be consideration of the minutes of the September seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen, mayor of the Board of Aldermen, mayor and board of aldermen of the city of Starkville. Do I have a motion for approval?
There's approval.
Have a motion for Alderman Siskel, or do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Little. Discussion? Alderman Vaughn.
Mr. Senator, before I vote on these minutes, I'm like my kid, I'll always tell him, I don't want to go to court about no minutes. Now, they even manage legally and been blessed by you.
Yes, sir.
I don't want to go to court.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Any further discussion? Alderman, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Perkins.
Thank you, Mayor. I would be remiss if I did not make some comments at this time. The gentleman from seven raised some very interesting and interesting question. And I'm seeking recognition at this time. As an officer of the court and as a member of this board, I do need to address that question that was raised by the gentleman from seven. And I'm going to say this, as I do with all my remarks and comments, as professionally and with integrity and with respect as I always do. And if I didn't respond to this question, then I would feel that I would not have fulfilled the duties that I've been sworn to fulfill. Before us at this time, and Mayor, I will inform the floor when I yield the floor. And otherwise, I have not announced yield, then the floor hopefully is still manned. The gentleman from seven asked a question, this is for everybody who's listening in, and I want everybody to pay close attention because this not only pertains to the minutes of this particular meeting of September seventeen, two thousand and nineteen, but this is going to have some very long-lasting effect and implication beyond my time in service as a member of this Board of Aldermen. And this tape is going to probably be pulled from the archives at some point, even once I am gone and left this earth, because someone is going to want to refer back and look and see, regardless of what the outcome may be, but they want to know what was said on this matter. Right before the board now, there's been a motion and second. I'm going to just analyze this, I'm going to take my time on this tonight. I only seek recognition when I feel that it's necessary and proper. But the matter that is at hand tonight at this moment is the approval of the minutes of the meeting of the mayor and board of Aldermen of Tuesday, September seventeen, two thousand and nineteen. In order for me to make a decision as to whether or not I vote in the affirmative or the negative on this question, first of all, I must know all of the facts. And the first question that comes before the Vice Mayor and Attorney Roy A. Perkins is, and of course, been practicing law for thirty-one years and been on this board now for in excess of twenty-six years and three months. And of course, I've sat through a number of boards, it's my seventh term here. So the question is, was the meeting that was held on Tuesday, September seventeen, two thousand and nineteen, a legal, a lawful meeting that was held in compliance with state law? The meeting that arose prior to September seventeen, two thousand and nineteen was held on Tuesday, September three, two thousand and nineteen. At the conclusion of that meeting, the board, as it always do, it took official action. And this is a serious matter, may not be serious to some, but it should be. But the board made a motion that it would be in recess until five-thirty P.M. on Tuesday, September seventeen, two thousand and nineteen. And what I'm about to tell you, not only to those in this room, but all those who are streaming live, I want you to get it correct. And what I'm about to say, the video evidence supports what I'm about to say. And the video evidence is the recording of this meeting as it existed on September, well, I'm going to just say the assembly, rather. I'm not going to call it a meeting. But on September the seventeen, two thousand and nineteen, according to the video evidence, there were three aldermen at this table and four aldermen absent, including myself, and the city attorney and the city clerk, and the mayor was present. And the law is real clear in this state. There's a provisional law that is codified under the Code Charter of Formal Government. That section is twenty-one dash three dash nineteen of the Mississippi Code of nineteen seventy-two as amended. There is a sentence in that subsection one, there are two subsections in that section. The next to the last sentence in that subsection, it says, it reads just like this. I'm going to analyze these words, and when I yield this, this is going to be the substance of my statements tonight. But that sentence says, and I'm going to quote it, it says, "In all cases," I'm going to come back and dissect this, and as we talk about these minutes, because this is a very scholarly discussion here, but it says, "In all cases," it didn't say some, or one, or two, or three. It says, "In all cases, it shall be the duty and the requirement of the alderman." In other words, to, in order to transact business of the Board of Aldermen, it requires a quorum. "In all cases, it shall require a quorum of all aldermen to constitute a quorum to transact business." Let me say that again. "In all cases, it shall require," and of course, the legislature didn't use the word "may," which is permissive. It didn't use, it uses the word "shall." "Shall" is mandatory, non-discretionary requirement. "It shall, it shall require a majority of all aldermen to constitute a quorum for the transaction of business." That's what the law in this state, that's state law. Twenty-one dash three dash nineteen subsection one of the Mississippi Code of nineteen seventy-two is amended. The board on September three, two thousand and nineteen recessed until five-thirty P.M. on Tuesday, September seventeen, two thousand and nineteen. When this assembly came live on the air, the presiding officer made it clear that there is no meeting. The presiding officer of this governing body made it clear that it is no meeting. The presiding officer made it clear that, "I can't call it a meeting, we're just here, we're just existing." That's what the presiding officer say, "It's like we never met." The presiding officer of this governing body said, "We're going to stay here for thirty minutes so that hopefully at least the board or at least one other alderman can show up so we can transact business." And the reason that was necessary, because the presiding officer and the other three in attendance were in need of a quorum to transact business. Remember now, I just told you where the legislature say, "In all," it didn't say in one case, or two cases, or three cases, it said, "In all cases." That means, in every case there exists, it shall, it didn't say it may. It shall require a quorum of the aldermen to transact business. And a quorum is a majority of this board. So even once it was established that there was not a quorum present, and the presiding officer never recognized, and even made it real clear throughout the first thirty minutes of the assembly, there was no meeting, it was just an assembly of people here. Under state law, the word "meeting" is defined in the Open Meetings Act, Section twenty-five dash forty-one dash three, at second, other section of the Mississippi Code of nineteen seventy-two is amended. The word "meeting" means an assemblage of members of a governing body to transact official business within the authority, the jurisdiction, the control of the body. Under no parliamentary procedure can you transact business without a majority. And that's why the chair at this first session said that, that, "Well, I can't adjourn it because there's nothing to adjourn it." It never existed, it never happened. Do you hear me? It never existed and never happened. And even before the first person came up and the citizens come in at that assembly, it wasn't a meeting, ladies and gentlemen, because the chair recognized that. And when the first person came up, it was stated, "Well, you know, just come on up and speak to us, you know, we're not a meeting, we're just here. We are just here." Under the law that I quoted to you, you cannot transact business unless you have a quorum. A quorum is a majority of members of this board. So if you don't have four, you cannot transact business. And remember now, the board speaks through its minutes. That's why I'm taking the time tonight to speak to this. I'm not worried about what the votes may be, but we need to make sure we get this legal discussion because this is the people's business, not about the messenger here. You know, I've been in this long enough, and just like I go to court and practice law, I just make sure I just do what I'm required to do. But this is the people's business because at that particular meeting, it was stated, when the first citizen came up, that, you know, that we're not in a meeting. We are just here, but we can at least hear from the people who have some citizens' comments. So given the fact that the board speaks through its minutes, the board recessed until five-thirty P.M. on Tuesday, September seventeen, two thousand and nineteen. So what happens when five-thirty comes and you don't have a court? Now, based on my legal opinion, regardless of what somebody else says, regardless of what another lawyer tells you, regardless of what the Attorney General's office tell you, because the Attorney General's office is just an opinion. You know, it's not speaking from a court of law. And the Supreme Court has talked about complying with the requirements of the open meetings law. So, you know, there has to be a quorum to transact official business. So even from five-thirty, when there was no quorum, and when five-thirty-one came, you know, that particular setting was over. The meeting was recessed, it wasn't recessed until six-ten. Remember now, the board speaks through its minutes. When the board made the motion on September three, two thousand and nineteen, it recessed, ladies and gentlemen, until five-thirty. This will have a time served. Because who do we speak through? Not through the vice mayor. You don't speak through the gentleman from seven. You don't speak through no other alderman, you don't speak through nobody else. You speak through, or we speak through, our minutes. So what did the minutes say, that we recessed until five-thirty P.M. on Tuesday, September seventeen, two thousand and nineteen? So when five-thirty-one come, you go home. Now, one thing I want to applaud the chair about, the chair did recognize something, the solution to the matter. But the solution, ladies and gentlemen, and I'm saying this with all great respect, all great respect, nothing negative here, it's just a legal discussion. One thing that the chair did recognize from my listening to the tape and seeing the tape was that we need to call, or she didn't say, the chair didn't say, "We need to call," so I'm going to call a special call meeting. But that never happened. Now, once five-thirty came and there was no quorum, the only remedy was, was to go home and meet at the next meeting, or a special call meeting by state law, which could have been called by the chief executive officer of this city or into alderman, provided that at least three hours of advance notice is given and all the subjects are articulated. So when six-ten comes, there was a non-member at this table, a non-member of this governing body, it wasn't a mayor, it wasn't an alderman, said at six-ten that the board stands in recess. If you're going to stand in recess, it takes an official act. To continue a meeting, to do anything, for us to do anything, that's why we had the consent agenda and this agenda, because it takes an official act. If you're talking about continuing anything, you're talking about continuing a meeting, or continuing a discussion, or tabling a discussion, it requires an official act. This assembly of persons that was here, constituted here, not, it wasn't never a meeting, that was here at six-ten on Tuesday, February, on Tuesday, September the seventeen, two thousand and nineteen, could not transact any business. So, given the fact that only three aldermen were present, there was no way you can recess a meeting until nine o'clock that night, or even seven o'clock that night. Why could that not be done? Because remember that the statute says that in all cases, it don't say one case, or two case, or three case, or four case. It says, "In all cases, it shall," and "shall" is mean you don't have any discretion, you got to do it, you must do it, you shall do it, you got to do it. "It shall require a majority of all." It didn't say a majority of two aldermen, it didn't say of three, it didn't say of four, it didn't say of five, it didn't say of six. And we have a total of seven aldermen. So, a quorum means four of those in order to constitute or transact business. So there was no way you can come in at six-ten without a quorum and continue or recess a meeting until a later time? And the chair had clearly recognized that we are not in a meeting because it's just like it never happened. Now, if someone wants to contradict that, I'll call for the tape on it. And then, here it comes, we come fast forward from six-ten, and of course, if you had a special call notice issued, then it would have required at least three hours' notice and notice all the board members. So what happens at nine o'clock that night, listen to me, ladies and gentlemen, at nine o'clock on Tuesday, September seventeen, two thousand and nineteen, according to the video evidence, you have five aldermen present, and I'll be transparent, the vice mayor and number seven were absent. And the presiding officer says, "I now call the September seventeen recessed meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order." There was no authority to call a meeting to order at nine o'clock at night. Remember that we speak through our minutes, that we recessed tonight? We last met on September three, two thousand and nineteen. We recessed at five-thirty, not tonight. You know, and the chair made it known that there were important items in that agenda, which was a number of things to include, but not limited to the budget, the mileage, the compensation plan, among other things. But nobody in this country is above the law. Whether you're in Washington, D.C., or in Starkville, Mississippi, that includes the vice mayor, nobody is above the law. And speaking about this minutes, there was some mention too about sending the police to round up those that weren't here. None of us have violated the law. But back to these minutes, there was no meeting that was ever held. Regardless of who says to the contrary, I feel I can defend that in any court of competent jurisdiction. Given my thirty-one years of practicing law, my years of administrative experience, my years, twenty-six years, in excess of twenty-six years and three months as an alderman, my background as in parliamentary procedure, background as board, only thing, I'm not trying to show anybody up. I mean, I'm a person of high character, of high integrity, a person of class and professionalism. This is just a scholarly discussion, this is nothing negative. I'm just talking to the public. I just want to make sure, because the minutes going to probably get approved, but I just want the people to know that we speak through our minutes. If this happened this time, don't let this be no precedent. Because this precedent will eat you alive, because I've seen time after time that one board will say, "Well, this other board did it that way," and that means they believe it was right. Because if these minutes get approved tonight, gentleman from seven with your question, then it makes it appear that you can come in here on any given time and transact business with at least three people and the presiding officer and say that the meeting's standing recessed. How can you recess a meeting without an official act? And the law is just telling you, you got to have a quorum. You know, and the people need to get understanding, and the press needs to get a good understanding. You need to understand what the law says before you start being critical of people about these minutes and this meeting. Because the law states that in all cases, it shall require a majority of all aldermen to transact business. So the meeting, as the chair thought, and probably thought that, at nine o'clock, it was said that the September seventeen recessed meeting of the mayor and board of Aldermen is called to order. The board never recessed at nine o'clock. There was no meeting. At five-thirty-one, you either go home or a special call meeting is to be issued pursuant to Title twenty-one of the Mississippi Code of Seventy-two as amended. It was an easy fix. But it was just a matter of trying to move forward, and we are not above the law. We want to hold people accountable within our jurisdiction, but we have minutes right before us right now. I'm talking about these minutes, and the reason I'm talking about them, because we have to, as a governing body, comply with the law. There was no meeting. Even in our rules of procedure to finance a meeting, you have to have a quorum to legally you have to have a, um, a quorum to legally transact business. Even if the mayor is absent, if she's in New York, or Washington, D C., or Canada, or in, in England, if I'm presiding and three aldermen shows up at five thirty, I'm gonna tell them that we can't have a meeting. We don't have a quorum. And that's what are the facts here. Ladies and gentlemen, I wanted to give you the facts. I'm about to conclude here. And can the Vice Mayor vote for this motion? The answer to that question is easy. Because why? I cannot do it, because there was no meeting. I cannot approve minutes of a meeting that, that never happened. Any meeting that was allegedly occurred was unlawful. Any meeting that allegedly occurred on September seventeen, twenty nineteen was improper. Any meeting that allegedly occurred on September seventeen, twenty nineteen was against the law. Any meeting that allegedly occurred on September seventeen, twenty nineteen was not in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. And the law is gonna supersede any rule of procedure. And even in our rules of procedures, it states that it shall be the duty of the presiding officer to declare the assembly or meeting adjourned when there's no quorum. Now, of course, you can go through the rule book and pull things out that is favorable to one side of another, but I'm talking about the law. You know, the Supreme Court, as we talk about these minutes, it has given a number of cases talking about compliance with the Open Meetings Act. So the point that I want to make from this discussion, the reason I wanted to be so involved, because I want to make sure everybody do not miss a single point of what I'm saying. I'm not talking negative to anybody. I'm not talking down to anybody. But it's very important as we proceed, and, and, you know, and aldermen are going to be absent from time to time. None of us are ever perfect with anything. Nobody's perfect. There's no perfect attendance. There's nothing perfect about any of us about life. There are deficiencies in one place or another, but at the same time, we got to comply with the law. If you recognize there's an out of compliance with the law, then we need to make sure. Now, what happens, uh, ladies and gentlemen, if we don't, if this motion is defeated? It still is an easy fix. It may not be a timely fix, but all you got to do is, you know, put it back on, uh, on, agenda, at a dealer call meeting, and, and just make sure you get it right. You got the milage involved. You got the budget involved. You got employee compensation. Everything that we do is important. And, and these minutes, one other thing I want to say, uh, about these minutes, at the very top of these minutes, it talk about that the meeting was called to, the recess meeting of, at, the five thirty recess meeting of, of September seventeen, twenty nineteen. There was no five thirty recess meeting. Do you understand at five thirty, you only had three aldermen here? Only three aldermen. There was no majority, so you couldn't have a meeting. So anything happened that night or thereafter, unless it was a special call meeting, which it wasn't, then it was, it was not legal. It was not lawful. It was not proper. It was in violation of the law. So given this discussion, these minutes should, but not likely, they should, but not likely, be defeated. And I'm not saying this to, uh, bolster some point, but, you know, I just want to be consistent, as I have done for over, or in excess of twenty-six years and three months at this table. So I wanted to say that, so we can realize the importance of it now. And after I yield the floor, it's not about why somebody missed, or who was here, or why somebody missed. The point is, do not approve these minutes, because there was never a meeting, and the Chair recognized that on more than one occasion, five thirty. Where, the Chair said, ladies and gentlemen, we are at a point where we do not have a quorum. Why was that statement important? Because we cannot transact business. You cannot tran- transact business without a quorum. You cannot recess a meeting. To recess a meeting from one time to another time requires an official act. And I just told you, or informed you respectfully, that in order to transact official business, you got to have, um, a majority. You got to be in an official meeting. So anything less than three, you're just assembling. You're just an assemblage of people. A meeting is a, um, is a, a group of the governing body when they assemble and can act officially. That's why the Chair said, we, it's like we never met. We're not in a meeting. And the Chair astutely recognized that. Didn't try to hide it on camera. The Chair made it clear on more than one occasion, we're not in a meeting. We're not in a meeting. It's just like we, we did not meet. The lawyer was here. He heard it. He didn't try to stop her, because he knew that. He, he's, he's a smart lawyer. He, he, he knew that. He knew that. He knew that there was no quorum. So that point is undisputed. Now, so one, um, disagree about what I think happened, now, you know, we can pull the tape up. The tape is the best evidence, if you don't believe the Vice Mayor. I've seen it more than one occasion. I've done my homework. I feel that I'm right. I have a strong belief in what I'm saying. If I was practicing law, somebody came in, I feel I could win it. I feel I can win it. Probably, I feel I can get a unanimous decision. Feel just that strong. So, um, Mayor, I, as I said, I just wanted to make sure that I just mentioned this, a point. I mean, uh, I'm not gonna be back and forth on it, regardless of who has something to say behind it. It's not, the issue is, as I get ready to yield, the issue is not about why somebody didn't show up. The issue at this point is the minutes. We speak through our minutes. Was it a legal meeting? The meeting, as I represent to you, based upon my expertise and background, years of training, was, was no meeting. Matter of fact, it was not only, it was, it, it was not only a no meeting, and even if someone says a meeting, it's illegal. They comply with the law. Never, Open Meetings Law does not allow that. That's why you recess to a time certain, so you can give the public proper notice. You just can't come in and do what you want to. That's all the laws that govern that. That's what the, uh, court told the City of Columbus back there, in the case of twenty seventeen, City of Columbus versus Commercial Dispatch. The issues were different, but the point was, the, the court, the Supreme Court, and the Ethics Commission, and the Chancellor of Justice District told the City of Columbus, you got to comply with the law. Now, of course, the facts were different, but we're talking about the Open Meetings Law. So that's all, you know, I'm, that's why I'm here, to lend my ex- expertise, um, to the citizens of Starkville. I'm gonna represent, and, you know, some people may think I'm just unnecessarily taking time, but, but this is how we do in law. When we go to court, we have to make our point. Because when I sit down and rest my case, Your Honor, Your Honor, uh, what says the, the plaintiff or the defendant? We tender, Your Honor. When I sit down, I'm through. Because I need to hopefully I get a favorable decision. So I just want to make sure I take the necessary time, and hopefully the taxpayers of this city will appreciate what the Vice Mayor has said. And hopefully the taxpayers will thank, um, for this information. I think it'll be beneficial down the road, even though it's a decision which I don't think is gonna be, be changed tonight. But I'm not saying it trying to, um, you know, I mean, change somebody's heart, but hopefully it will. But we need to do what is legally correct. But the, but the focal point of these minutes, and the only reason I brought this up, because it needs to be said, and, and the board approved these minutes tonight, it just needs to know that some consequences could follow, because the meeting would never happen. And then it certainly does not need this, this precedent. Because, you know, I don't question why members don't be here. I've seen members absent all, over twenty-six years and, and three months. I've seen members miss consecutive meetings. I don't be worried. I just make sure, I show up, take care of my business. I don't try to keep up the Joneses. I just worry about the Vice Mayor being here. I don't worry about why this person, I'm not gonna call it disgraceful, or shameful, or whatever you say. I just make sure I'm here. And transact business. Got the gentleman from five, not here tonight? This is my colleague. Man, I'm not getting his personal business while he's not here tonight. That's his business. I just recognize him as a distinguished colleague. If he absent the next meeting, that's his business. If he absent the next meeting, that's his business. That's not for me to get into. My job to be a professional, but as we look at these minutes, um, I'm actually the board, given all that discussion, um, you know, um, that we, um, that we defeat these minutes, and, um, and the remedy for that, you know, the mayor can call a special call meeting, put these items on the agenda, and the board can take action. They only had to have three hours' notice. I'll be in town for the rest of the week, um, except for in the morning, and, um, and I'll be in court Thursday, but I'll be here, and, or, you know, have a special call meeting and put them on the next agenda. We can just take these matters up, but that's what needs to happen, regardless of what the outcome. It'll be, it is what it is when, when the board takes them up again. But Mayor, I just wanted to say thank you for, um, for allowing the Vice Mayor to say that, and you can tell that it was really on my heart to say that. And, and certainly I didn't say it to, um, to cast any negative shadow on anybody. And I think my words were carefully articulated and, uh, and pronounced, uh, so it was very clear to everybody who's listening to know how sincere I am with my role as an attorney and the Vice Mayor's and officer of the court. So, um, and hopefully, you know, that, you know, I mean, however the board votes, you know, we're gonna go on to the next item, but I, but this is, but these, when I saw these minutes, they've been weighing heavily on me, and I feel that I need to say that. And now I've said it, and, um, Mayor, I'm gonna yield the floor.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Alderman Carter.
Uh, City Attorney, what are your thoughts on this?
Yeah, my thoughts are that, as always, I immensely respect the Vice Mayor's experience and his opinion and point of view on this. We just respectfully differ, and he and I talked about this, so his comments are not a surprise to me tonight. Where we differ is, I don't believe any official business took place until nine o'clock, when a quorum showed up. The mayor did open the meeting at some point before six ten P M., and then she called for a recess break, or an end-meeting break, to see if a quorum would develop. Our procedure is governed by the Standard Code of Parliamentary Procedure. And in that book, it says, if a quorum is not present, it may be possible to take action to obtain a quorum. In my mind, with the budget pending and the milage pending, that was the action that the Chair took to see if a quorum would develop at nine o'clock, by Alderman Little's plane landing, and whoever else would be present. So, in my mind, uh, it's compliant.
So was the meeting started without a quorum?
The meeting, the Standard Code of Parliamentary Procedure says the Chair can open a meeting without a quorum, and she can take reports and hear citizen comments, which is exactly what happened. Uh, I don't know exactly what she said at the beginning of the meeting, but I know at some point she said, I'm officially opening this meeting before she called for a recess break at six ten. Then instead of having a ten-minute coke break, there was a two-hour break to get us to nine o'clock P M., when a quorum was here, and then the board conducted business.
So you have comfort in voting for these minutes tonight?
I do. I think they're legal.
Vice Mayor, do you have further comments?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Just very briefly, uh, Mr. Clemens, um, um, let me, I'll make one comment. I want to direct a question to Mr. Clemens. Um, the attorney referenced the quorum, and, and under that book, it says, "A quorum is the number or proportion of the members of an organization that must be present at a meeting in order to transact business legally." We didn't have a quorum. Mr. Clemens, do you have the capability, just about, I only want to spend about four or five minutes. Do you have the capability from this room to show me the beginning of the six o'clock session? I want to spend about five to seven minutes, and I'm gonna move on. Just, do you have the capability from here to show me what was said at the very beginning of six o'clock and nine o'clock, then I'm gonna move on?
Yes, sir. I can, I can pull that video.
Pull it up, and that the attorney, the facts different from mine.
And I'll tell you when to stop the first one.
I'll have to skip around.
He is, so this flight is going to be delayed until about eight thirty tonight. We are however waiting until three, and I have asked Chief Nipples to go see if he can round them up. So I'm not quite sure what the issue is. But, um, we can all just enjoy ourselves and chat, do whatever. So, um, have a video to play. Two missing aldermen. Uh, one of them is delayed, because he is on the flight back from England, through U K. And so this flight is going to be delayed until about eight thirty tonight. We are however waiting until three, and I have asked Chief Nipples to go see if he can round them up. So I'm not quite sure what the issue is. But, um, we can all just enjoy ourselves and chat, do whatever. So, um, have a video to play. So, here we are, ladies and gentlemen. I apologize for what happened to those who are not here. But this is about all we do for the time being, so thank you for your patience. And we, we are, um, refreshing, com, pardon, refreshing would be good, and I like refreshing the town.
Mister, uh, um, please, could you go about the six minutes over there, about six minutes and thirty seconds over? I think she'll talk more about that, uh, six minutes in that area. Yeah, in that area.
Okay, um, ladies and gentlemen, those of you who are watching, those of you who are watching, we are at a point where we have no quorum. Uh, this was a particularly important meeting. This was a meeting where we adopted the budget, adopted the milage for the coming year, um, addressed the paybacks that are pending for our employees. So we have, uh, people here from Memphis and from Oregon, who were here to make presentations regarding the costs. So this is a very substantive meeting. Um, I believe we have what can be called an opportunity for our board members not to have a quorum, so that we can conduct business. And I find in my, hm, however many years of doing this, I've never seen this happen. And he is pretty well showing what it is, what it is. So what I'm going to do is give about thirty minutes for our board, at least one more, to show up for us to have a quorum, for us to conduct business, conduct business. The budget is obviously an extremely important document that we need to pass. And every time that we, every day that goes by that we don't pass it, we shouldn't. I always pass it over fifteen. But because the board was torn, and we're not absolutely sure how we're gonna handle this, the, um, board chose not to do it. We had a work session last Friday, at what point in time we discussed it, and, uh, I think the rest will come down, but we're going to be able to apply some sort of compromise and then vote. Sadly, that is not the case. So, in order to do the city's business, um, which is what the elected representatives are here to do, it seems as though we will not be able to do that tonight. Um, at about ten after six, I will probably call this meeting, uh, actually, it's not me. I will, I will move, I will, I suppose, cease to be here, uh, because I would have called it a jerk, because it's not a jerk, because it's no bad.
Mister Clemens, will you fast forward to nine o'clock?
Please, just one question. Please.
Just one question.
Yes, on the click of the air. Now, Mr. Clemens, this at nine o'clock on September seventeen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, play just the mayor's opening remarks.
Good. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we'll call the recess meeting of September seventeen, Board of Aldermen, to order.
Thank you, Mr. Clemens. Mayor, just in closing, I just, uh, that video just confirms what I said, that there was no meeting, and that the, uh, alleged meeting was not called to order until, until nine o'clock. And, and, and for those reasons, just support what I was saying. And I just only offer that after my, after my distinguished colleague from Lafayette, the, my distinguished colleague of law. I mean, I just wanted to make sure I just brought those points out, so the record be clear of what happened, and then when the meeting was called to order. So it wasn't called to order until nine. And so for all the reasons, I feel that, in my opinion, is staying. And I yield, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Alderman gone?
I heard you say it's a shame that we're not here. I've been here ten years. I won't miss five. What sort of shame about, because I, I wasn't at the meeting. You knew earlier. I told you I was sick. But I never, you never say nothing about nobody else missing a meeting, but it's a shame for us not to come to the meeting. How could you say that?
Um, I'd be happy to discuss with you elsewhere. The shame was that we didn't have a quorum, and that is a shame. Anything further?
All right, we've got a motion, a second.
Again, I just wanna, um, I appreciate the, the comments that, that were made, and I am not a lawyer. Um, but I would, again, ask the, the City Attorney, um, was the actions that were, that we, that took place that night, all, in your opinion, legal?
place that night, in your opinion, legal by everything that we did in terms of the meeting and the procedure and the effects of what was passed that night?
I think so.
Thank you.
All right. No further discussion. All those in favor, please signify, uh, tell you what, let's do this by roll call. Would you answer, yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name?
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrum.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Nay.
All right, by a vote of four to two, motion carries. Thank you. All right, Mayor's comments next will be, I have the opportunity to, which is always a pleasure, to introduce these gentlemen who are sitting on, I'm sorry, who are sitting on the front row patiently, gentlemen and ladies, sitting on the front row patiently. I had the pleasure of swearing them in, and now I get to introduce them to the board, which is a wonderful thing. So, if you would, please, I will introduce, starting with Jonathan Luttrell. Mr. Luttrell is from Bolivar, Tennessee, and is a graduate of Bolivar Central High School. Before becoming a member of the Starkville Police Department, Jonathan was a police officer for the city of Boonville. Jonathan enjoys spending time with his three children, as well as baseball, football, and riding motorcycles. Next is Isaac Johnson. Mr. Johnson is originally from Belmont, Mississippi. He is a graduate of Mississippi State University with a bachelor's degree in criminology. Isaac was a security supervisor at the resort at Pelican Hill in Newport Coast, California, before joining the Starkville Police Department. Isaac enjoys hanging out with his wife Jessica, and he stays active by playing sports. He attends Second Street Church of Christ in Belmont. Next, we have Darnell Madison. Darnell is from Birmingham, Alabama, and is a graduate of Tarrant High School. He attended Southeastern Bible College. Prior to joining Starkville Police Department, Darnell worked as a police officer for the city of Columbus. When time permits, Darnell enjoys spending time with his wife Ariel and their two children. He also enjoys football and watching movies. And last but not least, Valeka Nash. Valeka is from Starkville and is a graduate of Starkville High School. She attended Mississippi State University, where she majored in criminology. Before joining the Starkville Police Department, Valeka was employed with the Octobah County Sheriff's Department. During her free time, Valeka enjoys spending time with her daughter and taking a few quiet moments for herself. Valeka and her family attend Second Baptist Church in Starkville. Please join me in welcoming all of our new policemen. Thank y'all so much, we greatly appreciate you coming with us. All right. And next, I have one other item that I was gonna mention, we have, this week, we have Pumpkin Palooza, which I know is always enjoyed by everyone, it's from five to seven on Main Street on Thursday this year. Normally, it is on a Friday, but in this case, it's on a Thursday, so hopefully, everyone will come out, we close the streets and put hay in the streets and give candy out, and just generally have a good time. So, please, please join the partnership and the city as we host a Halloween-type of event, so. All right, Board of Aldermen comments, anyone from the Board of Aldermen? All right, seeing none, move to citizens' comments. And this is an opportunity for anyone to have three minutes to say about any particular topic to the board, what they are interested in saying. It's timed by our city clerk, and what I, before we begin, one of the things I'd like to ask, is anyone here for the place type maps, discussion, public hearing on place types maps? Okay, all right, then, citizens' comments. Mr. Turner, you are in line, please join us.
Green to Mayor, more than ninety thousand tons. To the mayor, to the podium seat, to the NAACP, uh, president, you're on ahead. To the mayor, the good that the NAACP attend these meetings, and, uh, I want to thank you for swaying me in there, the vice president of the NAACP, I tip our calendar for the voice of the people. I will be completing one year this coming January, and I have another year coming.
You're welcome, Mr. Turner. I was just saying, you're welcome.
Uh, now, the NAACP is allowed to, 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 to sort of like be the listening voice for the community. I was at the meeting in our, in our oath, that oath that we take, that when it becomes where we cannot conduct ourselves like we should, we should step down. That is not, and, uh, long, as long as I'm able, I'm gonna do what I can for the city of Starkville, because you all are taking care of me, and that's a help to everyone. Now, on Wood Street, on Wood Street and, uh, Louisville Street, uh, that little, that little opening there is not big enough, and time will go back next month, and it would be dark, and it would be dangerous, like we need a flashing light or something, so that we won't run over one another from Louisville Street into Wood Street, from Wood Street into Louisville Street. All right, that is just a concern of citizens, uh, because those buses have to swing out, and I don't know how long those buses are, but, uh, it's sad when you, uh, say that you are for the citizens of Starkville, and then you make a change. Uh, and this comes from the vice president of the NAACP. Uh, if you are elected for a position, you do what you can, and then you be respectable. Uh, it's, it's no time for being put on a playground. Uh, either you for the people or you're not. And thank goodness that, uh, I don't have a whole lot of book sense, but I got common sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone else wishing to speak in, under citizens' comments? Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I'll close it as citizens' comments. We have no public appearances this evening. We do have, however, our second public hearing and consideration of the, of the updated place type map amendments for the comprehensive plan. Mr. Hamlin and Ms. Corbin have, in the past, provided us that information. Do we have any questions from the board of this? Do we want to make another presentation?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, would you like to go ahead?
Sure.
Have a request for presentation.
And I'll make it brief.
All right.
Uh, this is just an update of the place type maps of the comprehensive plan. The place type maps are similar to what a zoning use map of the past used to be. Uh, the place type map is not a zoning map, it is just intended to translate the language of the comprehensive plan into a map. And then, beyond that, it's used by the Board of Aldermen whenever considering any zoning or land use changes being proposed, and it references the comp plan and the place type map. There are several factors that are on page forty-four of the comp plan that are used in creating and updating place type maps, inherent land use features, current use, current density and intensity, existing and potential infrastructure, real estate market dynamics, public stakeholders and preferences, current public policies, and planning best practices. When we were going through the place type map, we realized, when we were doing the Unified Code, we went back and referenced the place type map, and we noticed there were several areas, majority, or errors. The majority of these errors fall in one of three categories, or they exist in a couple of categories at the same time. Misalignments, current use conflicts, and parcels with multiple place types. The misalignments were the easiest to explain, they were created by a change in data. In 2016, we were using 2014 parcel data that was provided by the county, and around 2017, they updated the parcel data, which basically made it more geographically correct, and once they did that, it made it not line up anymore in a GIS system. The next was, uh, use conflicts and, uh, multiple place types. This was generally, the majority of it was created when the removal of a place type of natural area at the last minute on the approval of the comprehensive plan. When that was removed, the areas that were underneath that layer, so to speak, were kind of inconsistently placed type, and so this is just an effort to correct that. So, once we addressed those, then we went parcel by parcel and addressed all the, all the other use conflicts and place type areas and misalignments. This proposed update will create new maps that will go into the comprehensive plan. There's a total of twenty-three images in the cover sheet that will be replaced. The maps are found on page forty-five, forty-eight through fifty-one, fifty-three through fifty-six, fifty-nine through sixty-four, sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-nine, and seventy-three. And again, the update of this place type map is the first thing for the Unified Development Code, public hearings and adoption and approval. The, just as an announcement, the second public input session on the Unified Development Code will be on the twenty-second in City Hall at 5:30. And then, as the mayor announced earlier, the first public hearing on the Unified Development Code is scheduled for November twelfth by the Planning and Zoning Commission in this building at 5:30 on November twelfth. If there are any questions.
Any questions from the board at this point, before I open it as a public hearing? Okay, seeing none? I will open it as a public hearing, anyone wishing to speak about the updated place type map amendments, now would be the opportunity. Anyone wishing to speak about the place type maps? All right, seeing none, I'll close it as a public hearing. This is, also allows us to have considerations, this being our second public hearing, do I have a motion to approve the place type map as presented?
Mayor, move approval.
Okay, I have a motion from Alderman Walker, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Little, further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. All right, moving next to the public hearing, consideration of a conditional use for a request for residential use of C2 commercially zoned property located approximately seven hundred feet west of the intersection of Lynn Lane and South Montgomery Street with parcel one oh two I dash zero zero dash zero zero two point zero one. Mr. Hamlin, are you taking this one?
Yes. Uh, this is a conditional use request by Slade Cracker to allow for residential use on the C2 property. The property is located directly west of Maison de Ville. Apologize for that. The applicant is proposing eight single-family style residential units, dwelling units. In order to construct dwelling, single-family detached, a conditional use is required per the city of Starkville permitted in conditional use chart. The applicant is proposing to construct cottage, cottage court style development on the property. This style of development consists of multiple single-family homes located on the same parcel but are under condo ownership, to where the areas around them are under common ownership, the buildings themselves are under separate ownership. And what this type of development allows for is that a public right-of-way not be constructed with a cul-de-sac for a fire truck turn around in the middle, and people can actually own the property, own the home, without touching the right-of-way. The applicant has provided this conceptual site plan, which appears to meet the city development requirements and is proportionate to the area. This next image is just some examples of what a cottage court can look like, in other areas that it has been used. The gross density of the proposed development is plus or minus eight units per acre. The subdivision to the east is seven point eight five units per acre. The future subdivision to the south is three point eight one units per acre. Nineteen property owners of record within three hundred feet of the subject property were notified directly by mail of this request. A public hearing was noticed, was published in the Starkville Daily News on September twenty-first, twenty nineteen, and a sign was posted on the property. As of this, this date, the planning office has received one phone call, one email exchange regarding this request. Section A, Article Six, Section One of the city's code of ordinance provides for five specific criteria for conditional use review and approval. The first is land use compatibility. The proposed use as a dwelling, single-family detached could be considered compatible with the adjacent properties. The property is currently zoned C2. The 2016 comprehensive plan has the area placed type as traditional neighborhood new. Number two, with sufficient site size and adequate site specifications to accommodate the proposed use, the site is adequately sized to accommodate the proposed use. Number three is proposed use of mitigative technique, there are none proposed. Number four is hazardous waste, there is no hazardous waste materials could be generated to use or store at the site. And number five is compliance with applicable laws and ordinances. The applicant is responsible for retaining all the proper permitting required by the city.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hamlin. Any questions from Mr. Hamlin before I open it as a public hearing? Mr. Carver.
I say, first of all, most of the complaints I've heard from constituents around the area is obviously more due to the fact of not having homeowner HOA covenants within this development as there are within Maison de Ville, Riddle Run, and I think Mr. Andy Fornese's development is gonna be to the south. So, that's my only other question, was you said Maison de Ville is around seven point some units per acre, Riddle Run's three point two, and then what about Mr., the new development, Mr. Andy Fornese, what is it?
Uh, Fornese was the three point...
It's also?
Yeah, it was, uh, the actual, three point eight one, Maison de Ville was seven point eight five. And, uh, I can speak to the condo association, which is required when you create a condo, and the condo association, unlike an HOA, cannot be dissolved, it has to continuously be in place. So, it's not an HOA, it's a condominium association, but it's, uh, will exist forever.
Thank you. And then, some others constituents, we got a lot of emails on this, I know everybody did, and they said there were some verbal agreements, or were there written agreements as to what type of covenant would be inside this development? Some felt as if the crackers had verbally committed earlier, at earlier times, is there some history and truth to that, or?
Uh, the applicant has been in discussions with some of the property owners in Maison de Ville specifically, I believe, I'm not sure if they have with Riddle Run, but they have been kind of talking back and forth on some conditions that they would like to see.
And I see the applicant here, so I may ask that question, because that's pertaining to some of the emails we got, so.
Well, and I was going to let y'all ask questions of Mr. Hamlin, and then allow the applicant to come up, so are we ready for him?
Thank you.
Anything further? Okay. If you would, please. And if you would identify yourself for the record, Mr. Turner.
Yes, I'm Slade Cracker. I am the owner of this property, I purchased it about a year and a half ago as a C2 commercial lot, as an investment, and based off of location, 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 that's a good location for a lot of things, and we were really close in negotiations with OCH for urgent care to be built on this property, but that didn't, didn't come to fruition, so that's how we've arrived. Our family's done a lot of residential developments, not a lot, but some residential developments, so that's how we've come to this residential use. And I think that's a good, good use of the property. Uh, I think there's residential now on three sides, on three sides, maybe four sides of the property, so, um, we have a good plan proposed. Uh, I can answer your question, the, there have been some questions about the homeowner association, uh, that hasn't been, the way, in my mind, this process goes, was we asked for this conditional use of residential use first, before we even give any thought to any of the specifics, so, uh, but in the discussion with the neighbors, we, we've, they've given me some suggestions, and then I agreed to some, didn't agree to some others, so that's where we stand there. I think the biggest mitigative, uh, use that I've offered is a ten, ten-foot buffer of evergreens along what would be my east property line all the way down Maison de Ville's west property line.
Any, any questions?
Well, that may be addressed, one thing, I knew that one email came from an individual that was right on that wall, from a noise standpoint and ingress egress standpoint, so that was one of the things I had questions on, I appreciate that.
Okay, any other questions of the applicant? No other questions? All right, I'm gonna, if you'll step back, I will open it as a public hearing, and, all right, anyone wishing to speak to this particular application, public hearing, now is your opportunity. If you would identify yourself, please.
I'm Jay Logan, I live at one oh two Maison de Ville. I, I spoke to the Planning and Zoning Committee about this when it, when it arose, when I learned about the development next door. To me, I live at one oh two, which is the southeast corner, so my property line borders the southeast corner of, of this proposed property. At the time, I was trying to find some information about how the layout would be, I was unaware of some of the things that were involved there, and I have some concerns because of the grading of the property, and currently, right now, the, there's a retaining wall, and the difference between Lynn Lane elevation and the back property where, corner where mine is, is almost nine or ten feet, which means that, in this case, the driveway that was shown in the earlier map would almost put the wheels in the car right next to the windows of my house, up above the window. So, I learned a lot about some of the things that I was concerned, I was afraid of, and didn't really know about, uh, the... of, and didn't really know about, uh, the, the concerns I have with the, with the lights and the, and vehicle traffic, noise, proximity, just within five feet of, of my, of my property. After that, um, you know, Mr. Cracker and I, we've met, and several people in our neighborhood have met with him over the time, and looked at some, some different options and some, some things that we thought might be agreeable, and, uh, and I think that there are some that are there to, to, uh, to feel like this might be a, uh, you know, a proposal that we could live with. We do have some concerns about the neighborhood and how it's used, um, not only from the physical side of things with the grading and the development and proximity of the houses to my house, or the traffic next to my house and my neighbors' houses, um, but also, uh, you know, the usage of it. I think we are a little bit afraid of what, um, you know, I guess what may, what, what may move in and cause some of those other distractions. Uh, our, uh, our intent in moving to that area with our HOA was to protect some of the things that we had in place with, um, who is there, uh, that, that might be a student rental or something, or rental property that causes some distraction and noise, and sort of take away from that traditional neighborhood that we've had there for ten years, and Riddle Run, which is new across the street, and the concerns that they have with that. You know, I understand it's commercial now, and, and, uh, and it could be something different, uh, whether, whether this is approved or something else is decided to be done, so we kind of look at a lot of different, uh, there's a lot of different things that are in place that, uh, you know, would, would, would guide us, but we're, we're just having concerns and hesitations about what this may look like, or having some safety nets that might be able to protect us from the decisions that are made, um, going forward if this is approved. I think, I think just proximity to, to where I am, and speaking for our neighbors, um, the concerns about that and the, and the property values that may change with, uh, particular residents that may be moving, or how that's, how that's controlled, uh, would be a concern of ours, as well as the physical development of the property, so it's not causing any other problems with our, with our neighborhoods.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
George Berry, fifty-two Riddle Run. Uh, my wife and I moved from Brown Creek into Starkville. I guess you'd call it downsizing. And one of the important parts of that decision was where? Riddle Run, Maison de Ville offered that particular environment. We're not objecting to students, but we did not want to live in student housing. And I'm afraid what's getting ready to happen is we're getting ready to put student housing in the middle of all of it. It doesn't take a mathematician. Two-hundred-and-eighty thousand, three bedrooms, rental. That's student housing, just wait and happen. I appreciate it if you all would say, let's slow down, let's look at the development and see what really needs to be done, because you're getting ready to approve student housing.
Thank you, sir. All right, anyone else? Anyone else?
My name is Tommy Cobb. Um, my wife, Laura Lee and I live in the Maison de Ville neighborhood where we lived for four years. Uh, and we see it as single-family residential, non-rental. We had previously lived, well, first let me say, I appreciate each and every one of you being here, and after my five-year brief stint on the school board, I gained a new appreciation for y'all being willing to sit up here and, and, and be here and listen to people like me have a comment and so forth, but I do appreciate, irrespective of your, your opinion agrees with mine or not, I do appreciate what you do. But anyway, my wife and I have lived there for four years. We see it as single-family residential, non-rental. And I think what the gentleman from Riddle Run just mentioned, I think what's getting ready to happen is rental property, uh, a high-density rental property, more or less kind of a glorified apartment, uh, right there in the neighborhood, which we, we see as single-family residential. And after having lived in the Sherwood Forest neighborhood for, uh, twenty-four years, twenty-eight years, uh, and having had a rental house next to me for three or four years of that, it just seems to me that the rental apartment situation, it does not lend itself to that environment, and I appreciate your consideration of giving that some evaluation.
Thank you, sir. All right, anyone else? Anyone else?
I am Jeanne Frieden. My husband, Tom, and I live in Maison de Ville. We've lived in Maison de Ville for five years now. And, um, you know, I feel like that Maison de Ville and Riddle Run, and then also the development that Mr. Fornay is going to develop have solid value, um, and that's through our HOA regulations that we've chosen to, to have, and then also to be aesthetically good-looking for our property and to keep them up well. And, you know, I think any, anything going into that development that's adjacent to all those developments will benefit from our value that we've made decisions on, and, you know, if, if anything, uh, goes in there and does not have the same regulations as us, I feel like it will negatively impact our, our development in Riddle Run and Mr. Fornay's.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Anyone else? All right, I'm gonna close it as a public hearing. Discussion by the board. Alderman Sistrone.
I have a question for Mr. Havill, um, regarding parking. Um, there's proposed eight units, and how much parking would be available for each unit?
Uh, well, the parking would be determined, the requirement would be determined by the number of bedrooms.
Okay. And, and there's space, there's space to accommodate?
Yeah, as you can see just on this, I mean, without knowing what the number of bedrooms is, and not knowing if that's a garage underneath, or any of those kind of details, they have made space in the rear. If you look at the top of the screen here, and then at the bottom, and then on the side of those two, there is space for some surface parking, and I'm assuming some possible space for underneath parking, but without having the house plans, I wouldn't know that. And the parking is dictated by the number of bedrooms.
Right.
And that is usually reviewed and, uh, verified at the permit, building permitting stage.
True, okay.
Anyone else? Alderman Walker?
Thank you, and I would like to, to point out that the decision, whatever decision that the board makes tonight is a land use decision and not a, we're not reviewing this site plan in particular because that could change. What we're referring to is correct city attorney is that we'll be making a land use decision without going from commercial to, uh, residential. I appreciate, uh, Mr. Cracker being here tonight and try, answer questions, and I met with a number of the, the, the residents that live in Maison de Ville and Riddle Run to, to try to see, uh, where we are, um, where they are in terms of meeting with Mr. Cracker to find what some conditions might be. Um, and if y'all bear with me, I'm gonna read, uh, they, they've proposed eight different conditions, um, of which I believe seven have been somewhat agreed to, uh, with some, uh, maybe changes. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna just read those real quickly to sort of kick off the conversation, um, and then we can, we can proceed from there. Um, the first condition was, uh, one very similar to what, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, established was there shall be a maximum of eight single-family detached residential lots developed in the subject neighborhood, uh, and I would say ultimately, because it's gonna be a condo, it's not a lot, it's just gonna be eight single-family detached, uh, houses in the subject neighborhood. Number two, all lots in the subject property will be single-family detached residential houses, constructed with comparable building materials and finishes consistent with established adjacent property at Maison de Ville and Riddle Run and the proposed Andy Fornay development. Three, the DRC shall examine the site plan to ensure proper use of mitigative techniques are used to eliminate adverse impacts to neighboring property owners as much as practically feasible. That was, um, a condition that was placed by Planning and Zoning. Four, the grading and drainage improvements required for the development of the subject property shall be engineered to perform and function in a manner that will not result in stormwater runoff into the adjacent Maison de Ville residential units to the east of the subject development, and will incorporate all necessary mitigative techniques needed to prevent adverse impacts to the established adjacent property Maison de Ville and the proposed Andy Fornay development. Five, when negative impacts are imminent and cannot be mitigated, a building, foundation, sidewalk, parking driveway, or road three foot higher than that of Maison de Ville building elevation, the subject property shall incorporate a site development design and plan within minimum of ten-foot buffer yard at, towards the Maison de Ville west property line. This buffer yard shall have placed within it space a sufficient number of evergreen trees or similarly agreeable landscaping, greenery properly spaced that produces a mature width of at least four feet and a height of fifteen feet or higher. And if negative impacts are imminent, other suitable fencing or walls shall be installed to provide a solid privacy barrier toward the western property lines of Maison de Ville. Six, there shall be either no east-facing windows or consideration for acceptable windows based on the distance from the west property lines and homes located in the subject property so as to protect individual property owners' privacy. And then the last condition is the developer of the subject property shall be available to meet with adjacent property owners during a six-month period review for the conditional approval and obtaining final site plan. Uh, I say all that to say that if this were to be approved tonight, I think this would be the basis for the conditions that, that would be, uh, assigned to the property. Um, and I believe a lot of those conditions have been agreed upon. The ten-foot buffer yard, uh, has been agreed upon. Um, many of those conditions are agreed upon. The one condition, um, that I think, uh, that we've received the most comments about, and I think are the, the biggest, one of the biggest concerns, and you heard it mentioned tonight in the public hearing, is the potential for this property to be rental units. Um, that was something that, uh, the, the two parties couldn't come to an agreement on. So city attorney, I'm gonna ask, I'll ask you or city, the, the city planner to address that. Outside of a homeowner's association covenant or condominium association covenant, does the city get into the, how can we enforce or can we enforce, um, a rental type of agreement in a, in a covenant or a condominium association?
The conditional use ordinance is broad, to allow you guys to attach conditions to oppose, propose conditional use, and since such a condition would go to the land use as to what type of residential land use it would be, I think the board could attach that condition of no rental if that's what it so desires.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think, uh, one of the things that I, this, this property, as we're beginning to see about, uh, currently is zoned C-two. Um, there are a number of different options that are allowable by right in C-two, and just to better help inform the board and maybe the, the public, um, could we walk through what the different scenarios might be for how this property might develop? Um, if, if approved tonight, if this, uh, conditional use is approved tonight with these conditions, obviously, um, it sets the, the foundation for this to be single-family, detached housing, whatever the conditions are. If this condition, uh, conditional use tonight were to be denied, then the property is still C-two and could be developed, um, throughout that.
Correct.
If, and I'm gonna make a, an assumption here, if, um, uh, that is the case, and if in December or thereabouts in the next several months, the new Unified Development Code is adopted, can you walk through what those scenarios might be of what would be allowed by right and/or special exception on this piece of property?
Sure. Uh, the C-two zoning is basically kind of like a general business, almost like a highway classification. So anything that you see that develops on Highway twelve or even on Lewisville Street would be, for the most part, allowed by right. Uh, car dealerships, retail stores, uh, similar to like a dollar-type store, strip centers, um, it's, it's a wide range of commercial uses that are currently allowed in a C-two. The proposed zoning is a traditional neighborhood new. Uh, traditional neighborhood new is defined as primarily, you know, single-dwelling detached houses, but with very limited commercial activity. And by limited, it's limited in the use and in the size and intensity of that use. So that would bring it down to where you could have like a professional office, but it's kind of limiting the amount of square footage that that professional office would actually be. Can we expand any further into that, or in the process-wise?
Well, maybe not so much process, but, so it could be single, by right, it could be single-family detached housing, of which the units are roughly eight units per acre, which is what?
Yep.
This, the site is roughly one acre in size.
Yep.
Um, so from a density perspective, they, they would be able to do by right, similar to what's currently being proposed?
Similar to what's currently proposed and similar to what Maison de Ville. I believe it's fifty-five-hundred square feet, uh, is the minimum lot size that we're proposing for a traditional neighborhood new, so if you divide that by the acre, it'd get you right around eight.
Okay. And again, just, uh, to walk through what the, that other scenario might be, with a special, a special exception, you are allowed to do, uh, some duplex and row house or town house types of development. That would be some, more similar to what Riddle Run is across the street, which is a duplex. Can you just walk us through that and what the density of that might look like?
Yeah, with a duplex, uh, for a duplex, duplex in a development, there's a certain percentage of units that would be allowed to be a duplex. For the row houses, it's kind of the same thing, there's a, there's a minimum lot size to determine how many units you would get on it, and I believe when, uh, we were talking through this earlier, it would be around six to eight units if it were a townhouse, row house. But a townhouse, row house is what you actually think of. It's an up and down thing. You enter through the bottom, and the second floor is part of that unit separated by a wall.
But it'd be a maximum of two stories in height?
Correct. In the current proposed code.
In the current proposed code that if approved. So, uh, all that to say is that I think there are a number of sort of factors at play here that, uh, makes this a very difficult decision, quite frankly, um, on, on what to do. Uh, I think you have, one, if we approve this tonight with conditions in place, um, it locks in that it will be single-family detached housing, which I believe are, is, uh, would be favorable for the neighborhood in terms of matching the identity of Maison de Ville. Um, if it's denied, you have at least a few more months where it has the opportunity to still develop as C-two. Um, and in order for that to happen, what would an applicant have to, to do?
They would have to turn in, uh, the first step in the development of that site, because it's been, would be more than a thousand square feet of anything built, would be to get an approved site plan. So if in a, a complete application is turned into the city within the thirty days of the approval by the board, then it would still fall under that ordinance. And by complete application, that means, uh, a complete set of drawings that are ready to be reviewed and could possibly be approved if everything were okay. And then once that, uh, site plan approval is given, I want to say it's a twelve-month period, that it would remain active. And within those twelve months, if they obtain building permits, then it's, it's still active.
Okay, so if it were to be denied, you have, uh, commercial still available for, until the Unified Development Code is adopted. Um, at some, we think that's gonna hopefully happen before the end of this year. Once that's adopted, then it becomes traditional neighborhood new, where you're, where then you're required to develop single-family detached and/or with some, uh, ramification, or some opportunity for duplex and townhouse development within that same lot. What else, are there other things from these conditions that, that I just read that would be similar to what that, uh, what that would be required by, by right?
With the single-family, uh, there wouldn't be too many of those conditions would really go there, because a single-family would be built on its own lot, or one house on the entire lot. Yeah, no buffer. If there were, uh, I believe, uh, if it goes to townhouse, row house, there is some conditions in there that require like a buffer between the two properties, and just speaking from memory, the buffer, I believe, currently is set at a type C, which is a twenty-foot landscape buffer with a wooden fence, or a ten-foot buffer with a masonry wall.
That's if it were to be townhomes.
If it were to be townhomes, and, uh, I can't speak to what they were in the, the limited commercial uses, but there were similar buffer requirements in that, too.
And one thing we forgot to mention is, um, this, uh, concept of the, um...
Cottage court, yes.
Cottage court is a style of development we have proposed. It has to meet one of the requirements and additional standards, but that is also, uh, would be a special exception, which is currently known as conditional use. Could be a process they could do.
So this, so to make sure that I'm hearing you right, what is being proposed tonight in the site plan, even though we're not making a decision on the, the site plan? If what's being proposed there would be allowed by special exception under the cottage style, which has additional, additional standards, and those additional standards are?
They control everything from the actual square footage of it, the number of bedrooms, the, the width of the courtyard.
The number of porches, the...
The porches of which direction they face, the actual architectural finish, that the buildings can't be repeated, they have to architecturally change. Um, so there's a lot of, uh, stuff like that that's incorporated into the condo court development stuff.
Okay. And that sounds a little bit like, uh, what condition number two, where it says constructed with comparable to, to building materials, so it seems like it's getting at more sort of that architectural feel of what that's looking like.
Correct.
Okay. I think that, I think, I think some of the concerns that I had after meeting with the, the neighbors, uh, are, are, have been brought out, and some of the conditions have been discussed, and I think the biggest concern is how do you deal with the grade issue, um, and what that does in terms of putting lights or, or noise over into the development? I think the ten-foot buffer, um, begins to get you there, and I think the real question is, what is gonna be, um, the most suitable for the, the neighborhood moving forward? Um, is it the development that we have some idea of what it's going to be, or is it, um, the unknown with other additional standards that may, that may be there? And I'm open to hear anybody else's opinion on that. And I'm open to hear anybody else's opinion on that.
Alderman, Carver, I saw your hand.
My opinion is everything else, one through seven, has been, you know, really the issue is a non-rental, you know, type house or structure. And that's something I was going to ask, if a condition, can we add that tonight? I don't even know if the applicant would be, you know, in favor of that, just with the draw as application, but can we put a condition that states that it cannot be, or it has to be a non-rental and to meet all of these other conditions that you also listed? Can that be done legally?
Can.
And that's something that I guess I want to hear from the board, why, just how they feel about that. And I'm not sure, has the applicant been told this before this meeting, that there may even be an option tonight?
I don't know. I know that they were, my understanding is that he was presented with that option and did not agree to that option.
All right, we had, we don't have a motion, we don't have a second, so let's see if there's, well, we're going to go back into discussion. I'll go back, I just wanted to see if we've got a motion and a second to even move this forward at all, so.
Do we have a motion?
Not at all. Okay, is given the nature? Alderman Little?
I don't know if we say we're going to ban the rentals, and I get, and I get that argument, that that solves the problem from a parent buying it and allowing his child and a couple of other friends living it. I don't know that solves the problem. We've got that going on all over town, and I don't know that we can control that. You know, it may sound good and give, make everybody feel better, but I don't think some level of confidence that it's going to solve the problem. You know, I feel like, you know, I believe someone in your neighborhood has recently bought in Maison de Ville and probably had their two college kids living there before long. You know, I don't know if that's going to solve that issue. You've got C2, you could have a Dollar General there. I don't think that it's big enough, but, you know, pick your poison. Do you want to wait till January and if this, the new plan passes, if you want townhouses looking down into your subdivision? So, I don't, I don't know. I mean, I don't know how much dictate, how much the neighbors and Jason probably can dictate to another landowner what you're going to put if they, if they've got it by right, because they won't have to come back. If the code passes in December, they're not going to have to ask for permission, they'll have it by right and won't have to necessarily listen to the conditions that y'all have suggested. So, I think we need to be mindful of that as well.
Alderman, Carver, I saw your hand.
Well, it's not really related to Airbnb, but, you know, I'm going to bring some of this back up. I see your face. You know, it is an interesting, this is just a point I'm thinking is, you know, it's interesting that we can talk about comparable architectural facade, we can talk about compatibility of a neighborhood, and basically you don't want something to stand out like a sore thumb. But the same thing goes for rental. I mean, why wouldn't it apply that, you know, if it's traditional, single-family, traditional residential homes, you wouldn't, I don't think anybody on this board would want, you know, it just doesn't fit with the compatibility of everything going down that road. So, it is, I mean, that's from another standpoint, but, you know, I support the residents for the most part. I mean, that's what I questioned was, has the applicant, has he heard this? Because this is Board four, correct? That's what my question was, has the applicant heard that condition and is he in favor or not in favor of it? Because, I mean, that's something that, we're talking about comparable architectural facade. It would say the same thing in rentals, you know, do you want to have rentals in single-family? Would you want to have rentals in Timbercove or Greenbrier or any neighborhood, it's single-family residential. So, it's, it's an interesting concept, but I tell you where I'm leaning to it, I don't know if you're going to make the motion or I wait on you. No, I was going to say, if it's, if it's Alderman Walker's Ward, I would like to understand and hear the motion that you might present tonight, so.
Alderman Little, I saw your hand.
If I recall back when Mr. Fornay was, it was pretty contentious with the Sherwood Forest neighbors with his, with his project on South Montgomery, that we, with the new place type settings, place type maps, this is a transitional, this is transitioning to residential as you go to the east, because you've got, you know, you've got the Ameripro, the investment office there, you've got your doctor's office going up, and you've got other business offices, commercial, transition, you know, professional offices, it's transitioning to some condos and residential, single-family housing. So, that's just what, that's the character of the area. And then you get across Montgomery, you've got pure residential. So, I do.
All right. Anyone else? Alderman Sistrum.
And I'd like to say to the residents adjacent to this proposed property, that some of the things that will need to be hammered out, that will impact y'all greatly, will happen during the design review process, parking being one of them. When, when, I live in a neighborhood that is transitional, it's started out as single-family, and a good many of the properties have become long-term rentals. We have one or two short-term rentals in there now. But the, the problems come less from who lives in the houses than the number of cars and a lack of parking. And so, that's, that's something that I don't think attached with conditions tonight, but certainly something to be mindful of. That's why I was asking about, is, is that lot big enough to accommodate eight three-bedroom houses and parking for those twenty-four bedrooms and the cottage court that you're looking at? And y'all are telling me that it will, it will fit within that area.
Theoretically, it can fit, but parking generally drives your site design to some extent.
Right. Parking and then the drainage and infrastructure things.
And the thing that, as Alderman Walker mentioned as we started this, this is a, this is a conditional use for residential use in a C2. So, this is a zoning matter as opposed to development of a site plan, et cetera, et cetera. Alderman Walker?
I think one of the, one of the concerns that I think many of the residents had coming into this was, is that there's so, it's the unknown of you not knowing what's going to be there, because there hasn't been a lot of engineering or other design work really fleshed out. And that, so that is part of the way this process is set up, fortunate or unfortunate, is that for this conditional use, and city planner, you correct me any where I misspeak, but the way that this is set up is, we're approving a land use without having maybe a lot of those facts in terms of how much earthwork is really needed, can you really get that number of units on the site? And you're having to make those decisions without having a lot of the due diligence on that site really play out. So, I think what these conditions would attempt to do is sort of set the framework of what is the maximum or the most that we're willing to allow. In this case, it sets the density at eight. It could be that it's six, but we know that it can't be any more than eight. And those, part of those factors will be determined by when you actually do your, your site plan and it goes through the Design Review Committee. At that point, they will make sure that the grading and drainage part works out. But what is, what is less known is, how do you deal with making sure that the, the site plan is going to be conducive with being compatible? I would say the single-family nature of it, and on that end, I would say that it feels like it's, is compatible. But that's going to ultimately be the execution of how it's actually constructed and built. Can I ask a question of the applicant?
Yes, Mr. Cracker, would you come up, please?
I don't want to put words in your mouth, but the conditions that I read, or I believe are what were presented to you from the neighborhood. And in those conditions, do you agree with the ones that I read, that you would agree to, the ten-foot buffer, how you're going to the eight maximum units dealing with the grading and drainage improvements and et cetera?
Yes.
And can you talk to me a little bit about why the hesitation for the non-rental part of the agreement?
Yes, glad to share. The, the market should take care of itself with the rentals. The price, it starts with the price of the dirt, you know, the location, it's a premium. And so, with all the infrastructure and the price of a house upon completion at $280,000, it's the proposed price range for a 1,400 square foot, three-bedroom, three-bath, that really doesn't work. You're not going to see a lot of people buying those just to rent. Those numbers just don't work. So, that, I understand the concern, but that the market should take care of itself on that. And so, as a developer, I wasn't, and really not willing to limit myself to the potential buyer on the front end by saying no rentals at all, because what if a parent buys it for their child living there in school, and then the child moves away, and then they could keep it as an investment? That's just a property right that, that everybody should have. So, that's the reasoning behind not agreeing to that on the front end like this.
And this may be a question for Mr. Havlin. At what point in this process is the condo association, does that have to be formed? And what is, what does that process look like? And how is it similar to establishment of covenants for this neighborhood?
That is a part of when they actually get ready to condo platting, which a condo platting does not go before the board, Alderman. It's just approved by staff based on the requirements of the ordinance. And one of those is requirements that they turn covenants in with that platting.
Thank you. So, one, one other question, and this is for the city planner, would be if this were to be denied tonight, and they were to develop it under the traditional neighborhood new, and they meet the requirements of that, there might be a buffer requirement, there may be ingress egress, there's going to be size limitations on the houses, is there going to be anything in that language that is going to prevent the, any of those properties from being rented?
No.
All right, thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Do we have a motion?
I think the, the real question for, for me comes down to what is going to be in ultimately the best interest of the, the neighborhood? And I would say I've struggled with this one, because I don't think there's a clear-cut, I don't think there is a clear-cut answer. I think if you deny this property or deny this request with these conditions that have been agreed upon, of which I think the neighborhood is in agreement with the, I think the biggest discrepancy is the rental. If this property were to be denied tonight or this conditional use, it could be developed at the, when the Unified Development Code is approved, and many of these conditions that are in here would be either taken up by some of that, where there's going to be a buffer or the architectural standards, but you're still going to be giving up the rental piece, because that's not going to be part of the requirement. And so, I've struggled with what to do and what is truly in the best interest of the neighborhood. And, and I'm not sure. I think where I, where I maybe come down to it is I believe there might be more, there may be a little more teeth in the new code when it gets passed. There may not be. If it meets everything by right, it may be very much similar to what we're having here. Are there limitations in the size or a minimum size of those units in the new code?
Well, just, just to make sure that we're clear, the cottage-style development is a special exception under the new code currently. And yes, it does limit the actual footprint and the overall square footage of each house that's within the development.
So, by special exception, you mean that it would be brought back before the board for some type of?
Correct. And with the special exception under the proposed code, is there's additional standards that are listed? Those additional standards have to apply, like you just have to do them.
And those additional standards are like the, the architectural features?
Correct.
Things that are built into this code?
Correct.
Okay, we're, we're in need of a motion. We don't have a motion, and we take no action on this item and move to the next item. All right.
Mayor, I'm going to, I'm going to make, I think this is, I think we're fairly close to coming to some reconciliation between both the developer and the residents of the neighborhood. I would like to suggest that we take this motion under further, or this matter under further advisement to be taken up at the, the next meeting, if we can hammer out a few more of these particulars and see where we are.
Okay, so that is a motion to table this until November the fifth?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a motion to table this matter until November the fifth. I have a second from Alderman Little. Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it's unanimous, thank you. All right, moving to the next item. We have a public hearing to determine whether or not Building 19 of Brooksville Garden Apartments located.
And approval.
Thank you. I have a public hearing, I have to, I have to hold, but I appreciate that. All right, let me hold a public hearing on this matter. This is a matter regarding Brooksville Garden Apartment, located 305 Everglade Avenue with parcel number 118K-00-015.00, as a minister of the Public Health, Safety and Welfare of the community. Do I have anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this matter? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak to this matter? Seeing none, I'll close it as a public hearing. Dr. Kim, I don't believe anybody wants a presentation necessarily, so I have a motion for approval from Alderman Little. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Sistrum. Further discussion by the board. Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, thank you so much. All right, next item is mayor's business. Okay, and this is one, guys, that, that kind of quasi came from an article in the Clarion Ledger, which was noted that there are a lot of restaurants down in Jackson that allow, have allowed dogs on their patios, on their outdoor patios. And the article was basically saying that this is not a legal action, and I was noting that there are numerous restaurants in the city of Starkville that also do the same, from Ben 612, the City Bagel, back when it was a, it was a going concern, 929 now, The Grill, Camp House, any number of our restaurants allow them on outdoor patios. And it distresses me that we would have our restaurants that were not following the law. And so, in thinking about it, I talked to our representatives, Representative Robertson and Representative Taylor, and they both said that this is something that they could support going forward to get a local and private. This does not require any of that. This merely allows restaurateurs, if they wish to do so, to allow dogs on their open-air patios. And I think it's worthy of note that service animals now are allowed both inside and outside. So, it's not as though that there is, you know, not the opportunity for dogs to be in the vicinity of restaurants, whether outside or inside. So, that is what this is about. I just thought I would bring it forward to the board because I, and I got, and I talked to restaurateurs, there's a letter in our packet that a number of the restaurateurs in town have, particularly the ones who allow dogs on patio, have said that they think this is something that enhances their business. So, Alderman Carver?
Well, I say, I think I'm probably leaning toward this, but for the reason that it's at the discretion of the business owner. If something hurts their business, I think in time you'll see that it's something that some businesses may shy away from, that others don't, and they embrace. Second thing, the really only thing concerned, when I was reading through my packet, it says, number three in the resolution, it says that the state of Mississippi has adopted the United States Public Health Service Food Code, which was adopted in Whole Sex Under Six-Dash-Five-O, you know, it does not allow dogs other than service animals. So, this would be something that would be specific to the city of Starkville alone, and has any other city in the state of Mississippi applied for this type resolution?
No, they have not. We, I like to lead, we are leading in this one. However, the state of Florida, the state of Tennessee, Illinois, Washington, Washington, DC, Oregon, California, any number of other states have led this, already led this charge, because the, that particular code section has applied to the entire United States, because all states have adopted that code wholesale. And so, each one of the states have individually made that change. So, that's the reason I thought that, you know, and I spoke to the people at MML, and while they were here at a, at a conference, and they said that this is something that they could conceivably support and might do so. But as it stands right now, I thought this would be an opportunity for us to have a local and private. Alderman Little?
I don't have a problem supporting this tonight. I've seen in the packet where we've had the local restaurant owner supporting it, they can make that decision. If it impacts them negatively, they can, they can do away with it. So, just let, let them call the shots on that as far as their patio, patios.
Okay, thank you. Any further, further conversation? Do I have a motion?
With approval.
I have a motion from Alderman Sistrum. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Little, further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, by a vote of four to two, motion carries. Second is the consideration of median.
Move approval.
We, we have to make one, one caveat. In your packet, the, there were some, there was one that did not match all the others, and it had to have a strikeout. And so, with the caveat that the, all four of them would match for each segment that was in here, we'll go back and make that mark out, that strike through, and, and, I'm sorry.
It's on the table, too.
Yeah, that's where I was going to go. Yeah, it's at the table. And Mr. Latimer has looked at them and has passed off on them with the one exception that we'll make it merry up. It's the, I think it was the Highway 12?
The Highway 12 contract.
Highway 12 contract, needed to scratch something, so we will, we will make that happen, so.
Mayor, can I, so, what happened was, we redlined these agreements late last week before the work session, and we took out all the objective provisions that the AG says that the city shouldn't enter into, the hold harmless, the indemnification, the limitation of liability, the arbitration provisions. And they had a provision in there that said if the city doesn't pay within ten days, it's late. Well, state statute gives you forty-five days, so we changed that, too. They incorporated all of those changes, except on one contract for Highway 12, they called it Nash Street. So, they just got to change the name on that. The other three are at the table, and the fourth will mirror these three.
Yes, so it was just basically a typo, so. And I think I heard a motion.
Second.
Oh, where did I get my first motion? Oh, I'm sorry, all right, thank you. Alderman Carver and Alderman Little, thank you. Further discussion? Carver and Alderman Little. Thank you. Um, further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, next, under Board Business, this is the issuance of the public improvement bonds for the, um, park, recreation, and tournament facility.
And I move approval. This is just the next step in the process.
Okay. I have a motion from Alderman Sistrung. I have a second from Alderman Little. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right. By a vote of four to two, motion carries. All right. Next, we have, uh...
Move approval.
Okay. I have a motion calling for a public hearing. Um...
Okay. We're going to a public hearing, Ian?
I'm sorry.
Wait.
No, no, no. This is calling for a public hearing. This is just calling for a public hearing on, actually, the next four are calling for public hearings on various and sundry, um, addresses that have been identified by code enforcement. Um, so we can wait until the next time they have a presentation, or we can have it now. Alderman Sistrung, you had wanted to...
And, and I wanted to second this motion for, for, um, this and the, um, if it's all right, we could do all four of them at once. But I would like to call out the addresses, if you don't mind.
Sure.
If, if you would do that.
I'm happy to do that.
Just so that, um, people are very aware of properties. None of them are in, none of them are inhabitable. Um, they're, they're in terrible repair and do need to, um, do need to, to be taken away.
Yes. And I'm happy to do that. The first one is 202 McKinley Street. The second one is, uh, 333 Long Street. The third one is 606 Whitfield Street. And the fourth one is 722 Vine Street. And each one of those has a parcel number that's included in the packet, but, um, y'all, can we take this together?
You can, to make sure they're itemized, though.
Okay. All right. We will, we will itemize them with the, not only the parcel number, but the address. And I have a motion and a second for all four. Okay. I see head nodding. So that would be incorporate all four of those, including those parcel numbers, which we will put in the minutes in that form. Um, all right. Discussion?
I've got a question for Dr. Gill. Off of these...
Yes.
There's another property. So why are we looking at so many properties? What is that little house on 12 next to the whole changed places?
The one across from Sonic?
Yeah.
It's boarded up.
Is there anything we can do with that?
It's boarded up. We can, we can certainly look at it.
It's been there.
Yes. It, it has been there for quite a while. And there are a number of others around town. Yes, sir.
This motion is all four in one?
It does.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion carries. Thank you. It is unanimous, and that is for all four parcels. All right. Under Planning, we also have a special event request for the Frostbite half mare.
Move approval, Mayor?
I have a motion from Alderman Little. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Walker?
Mayor, I've got one suggestion.
Yes, sir?
The proposed motion is with the condition that proof of insurance is provided. I just want to add, with the condition that proof of insurance with coverage meeting the city's special event policy is provided a minimum of 20 days prior to the event.
Okay. You accept that amendment? Okay. All right. So I have a motion and a second further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Already see you out of training, Brad. Said you already see you out of training.
Okay. Yes, sir. Thank you.
We're going to get Carver signed up at 10 K.
By a vote of four to, motion carries. I'm sorry. What, what do we got going on over here? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Okay. Um, all right. Next item is a request for a final plat approval for Phase One for Portico subdivision on the north side of Garrett Road. Uh, Mr. Havlin, are you making a presentation on that one? Ms. Corbin's making a presentation.
Um, this is a request for final plat by Crosstown Builders for the Portico Phase One. Um, this request for Phase One would consist of 18 lots. The property is located in a R3A zone. The entire subdivision consists of approximately 11.04 acres with a proposed 51 lots. Um, give me just a second. 18 lots. Gotcha. Okay. So that's the whole lot. Um, Phase One is approximately 4.61 acres with 18 lots. The development as a whole has a gross density of 4.62 units per acre. All easements and dedications are shown on the plat. The road name has been preliminarily approved for use. Electrical, water, and sewer service, um, is provided by the city of Starkville. And this is the plat, just for reference. Um, and on October 8th, 2019, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted 4-0 to recommend approval with 15 conditions. Um, those are listed on the slide right here. If y'all...
And of the conditions, the first 14 are pretty standard conditions for a final plat for subdivision. Condition number 15 was specifically added by TNC, and it was just to add the lot size on each block of the plat.
Is that all, Ms. Corbin?
Yes.
Okay. Is the applicant here? There you go. Would you like to come up and share some words of wisdom with us?
Sure. Hey, Alan. My name is Trey Hayes. Um, I live in Madison. Uh, but, uh, we're excited to come up here and get involved in the building process and certain... We're ready to go. Hopefully, we're, we're good to go.
Any questions of the applicants? All right. Thank you. Just wanted to, want to give you the opportunity.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
We're, we're excited.
Further discussion from the board? Do I have a motion?
Mayor, move approval.
I have a motion from Alderman Walker.
With, with recommending the conditions by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay.
Second.
Second from Alderman Little. Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. It is unanimous. Um, claim stock it next.
Move approval.
Thank you, sir. A motion for approval from Alderman Sistrung, a second from Alderman Little. Discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right. By a vote of four to two, motion carries. And I believe that takes us to the end.
Mayor, move adjournment.
Ah, well, let me read out my work session, if you don't mind, please. Um, board will be meeting on, at a work session for November the fir-, on November the 1st for our November the 5th meetings. It will be on the second floor of City Hall. It is open and, uh, open to the public. We will be live streaming that, and, uh, the public and, and press are invited to attend. Um, a motion to adjourn?
Move approval.
I have a motion to adjourn from Alderman Walker. Do I have a second? Nobody wants to adjourn. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Alderman Sistrung. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.